Okay, it is seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. What's called the agenda today, constantly, and number twenty-three dash two update order. Now, all please.
Martin.
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Coke.
Here.
Want to welcome everyone in the audience this evening. You're here for an item that's on the agenda, which actually can wait until that item comes out and the rest of the council at that time. We could hear from an item that is on the agenda. There will be an opportunity at the Public Communications to discuss. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And why don't we invite our guest, Greg Edwards, to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. I would like to make just one statement. To make a statement.
One nation. Another, uh, individual liberty use and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Why can there any changes to your?
Changes in the year.
Councilmember, any changes? Saying none, you have a lot of members on the agenda?
No, no, sorry.
You have a lot of new second discussion. Sam Olbrius.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Ready.
Here.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah. We'll move on to Public Communications. We have one scheduled Public Communication this evening, and that is an update on catch to mind.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, City Manager. Welcome aboard. And beloved guests, when I came in the parking lot, I thought, man, a big crowd showed up for you. I'm in the group, then they go, I was speaking, you're following. I think they're a little bit brighter this year than Sammy Boru, and they're going to continue to get much brighter as this year goes along, especially through your move to Johnson. The great things you all have happening here, really excited about the bombers. And ignite and all the activity that's going here, so. Obviously, if there's a boost visitor ship and fortuitous with your community as well, also congratulations on all that good work. I think you're familiar with our primary funding, people travel, that area. They spend money all over the place, shopping, attractions, cultural arts, et cetera. Most of it is saved over into the cell room, and you tell them, and they should set up a certain amount of tax. Of which, uh, many of the operators check to save, stay in the community, back to the cities. And you disperse that money to Seven, so catch more, Two Seven Bravo, and Three Seven, thanks here for the city dollars. We have subscribed recently in the last six months to a company called Orivales. Which is one of these new high-tech companies that can attract visitors coming into the metro area. I can track them by mobile device, and see how much longer that lasts legally in the end. They can tell where visitors actually go, where they stay, where they're spending money, all kinds of data. Uh, we're still kind of getting through learning the whole system the way they look, but. They estimate last year was five point eight million in their state of metro area. Um, average life of state was two point eight nights, which is. Uh, send trips by origin by the state, Iowa, of course, is our number one. Two, Minnesota, followed by Illinois, Nebraska, Missouri, Wisconsin, Texas, and then California, Kansas, and Colorado. So, finally, we understand that, so not as surprised that they had to take you to the state joining us, but, uh. Most of the states and California and Colorado should have included. With that. Um, top points of interest in the metro area, one international airport, or the deep time center, the Iowa vet center, Port Avenue. The American Energy Reclex, and much more. United States Fairgrounds, used village, very nice, and the metro. Occupancy last year, we're finally come out of the slump and almost back to where we were in two thousand and nineteen, before, uh, pre-pandemic era. Uh, last year's occupancy was like a one fifty-five percent. And the share rate was up around a hundred and being almost $112. But you all seem to be traveling using all the cell rates for the SkyRock things, uh, that's been much, especially. Um, here in review, Katrina Black is with me tonight, which our Vice President of Sales, and she's going to talk a little bit about all the convention and other activity we got going.
So last year, we posted three hundred and thirty-two conventions and events, we break our hometown, mutual category of definite, and that's definitely those that. We had hand in bringing here this company, because we have been a fellow city of a bit, that's supposed to be those that come here regardless of where you're from. It's completely like the Iowa state, we invite you to. Yeah, because they're like, you're right. So three hundred and thirty-two is that total, correct, seventy-six happened because of the others. And then we booked initial two hundred and nine events for future years. So if the Johnson, we have fifteen weeks sent to Johnson property, fifteen events were held here, or even larger Johnson property, we've booked seventeen for future days. Um, just a little bit of a snapshot of some of what's here, um, our nurses association, national finger club, uh, athletic association, we do a certain show base. Um, you have a bowling conference this series of weekends, I was going to give a lot of our first, and I am a volleyball. We're constantly in conversation with future events to be here. Um, still pitching and thinking, and some of those, um, the, the national finger games, we're able to go there because of. They're not, they're in rock, it's a, it's a, we're, we're in the state of. State of the nation. They usually lose the game in one, uh, what we use, Johnson, the tolerance, so they're at twenty-three. Um, and we're cooking on a game in twenty-twenty-six and twenty-thirty, so it would be considered, uh, a little bit higher, too. So as Greg mentioned, um, twenty-twenty-three has already been a really good year, it will continue to be a really good year. So this is just a snapshot of some of the events that are happening and have happened this year. We just came off of ending the basketball, which was amazing. Shows for us in the community and, you know, the potential of the national media and really very experienced. Other events coming up, so national veterans, names that happened in May, like, you know, our, we're, we're into the week beginning. Union Park Resort. Um, military, the Air Preservation Association, and then that happened on the fairground, a lot of full military equipment. Um, maybe your public show and parade.
Johnson has a process that we call decision packages and those decision packages are requests from departments. Then are made to the council for a new program or additional staff or something different that we have not had before. This year, the requests total one point eighty-five million. And the city council ended up approving about approving one point three-three million for about seventy-two percent of those requests. Regarding those requests. It had to do with staffing or human resources. It includes two additional firefighter paralitics, an additional police officer. A neighborhood development inspector, an additional water sewer maintenance worker. And then additional public works maintenance worker and then a part-time public safety support specialist. There were decision packages. That are that were approved that are paid for from either our reserve or sources that are other than appropriate taxes. And those decision packages are listed on this slide. And then. I guess that's the last decision package slide. The next slide has to do with what we call lost. So our stand for local option sale return tax and this is this slide for. Sure, it would be kind of history what we've done since we started collecting local local option sales tax. And it lists for you what our tax rate was at the charge of the public, what our tax rate would have been if we had not had local option sale tax revenue. And how what that difference supported. So as an example for FY twenty-four, our tax rate is going to be ten dollars and eighty-six cents. If we did not have the lost revenue available to us, our tax rate would have been thirteen fifty-three. That two dollars and sixty-eight cent difference, a dollar thirty-three of it is debt service and a dollar thirty-five of it would have been for decision packages. And the additional property tax relief that you buy down currently buy down to the debt service money and you do also for general income as well. We have about five organizations that request money from the city. We've always called we are outside organizations. The city is increasing our contribution to both the Johnson Chamber and the Greater Vermont Partnership. Each by two thousand dollars, they're going to ten ten thousand dollars. And our contribution to community education through the Johnson School is really dictated by a twenty-eight-year group we have with that organization. The other two are not. And here again, I'm not going to read you all these projects, but I'm going to say that. We have a number of three cemetery, sewer, denture, public projects. That have either started or are going to continue into this current year or this current construction season. They're listed on this slide. And should the mayor, city councilor public have any questions about these specific projects? Matt Grant, our public works director, would be happy to answer any of those questions. And then our stormwater projects. We have several stormwater incidents happening in facility or twenty-three, four. And those are listed on this particular slide. And as a reminder to the public, this is what your stormwater utility fee on the utility bill is used to pay for, used to pay for these stormwater projects. And they were what they were already in format. Would you have any questions when you live in there? I mean, in stormwater. And then lastly, these are the three biggest significant areas of our actual improvement plan. That's why I pulled out these particular slides. This last slide then talk about our department park and trail. Again, some of these have already started and continue with our improvement that we park and park. Some of them have been designed, some of them have my public meetings and made with space to make a little help with it. But they're all various labels. But we'll all address some time somehow in the next six, seven years. And again, mayor councilor public could always ask John Schmitz if you have any questions about any public part. This slide is just a slide that gives you a history of what our property tax rate has been. That's two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-four. Just the records for the council and the public if they'd like to know what that is. I guess I would I would point out just for your own comfort, I guess, but I would like to say, but your your FY twenty twenty twenty-three. For eleven dollars and sixty-five cents per thousand. You're approving a ten dollar eighty-six cent tax increase here five years later in in our.
Do you want to go back to the map? The first year that you had up there, twenty fifteen, sixteen was eleven.
Yeah, eleven fifty. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know, I can say something that go have that many years. Yeah, we had as much higher, much higher rate. And so ten sixty-five or eleven sixty-five, we went down a dollar right away for most three years almost. And then now we're just now dumping up a little bit. So I think you should be very proud of that. This chart gives you a history of our combined twenty-three point three for a Johnson. So this has all tax advantages in Johnson and what they're doing. And I'm hoping the colors will kind of show up, but I'm going to start to read those lines. The darker line, the darker green line is showing you what our property tax revenue growth has been. With the bottom, the bottom line, you can start out with right, right here. This one is your property tax revenue. This is your property tax or tactical valuation growth. So you're you speaking, we've talked about this, but maybe for the public as well. You know, historically, we go up one year, we drop for the next year, we go up for a little more, then we drop, we go up, we drop, we go up, we drop. And that has to do with the equalization and then the rollback and then equalization and then rollback. And that's just kind of what had happened to us. And so for a number of years right here, we were, we tried pretty hard. To kind of keep the league about the same or up to that new goal of the same. Just see how we followed it for the most of the year. Here is when we dropped significantly a dollar. And we were just right at the level back in twenty-two. And then in twenty-three, we were much lower again than what our tax value broke was. And then this year, these came out, repeated matched. That's how we got the revaluation numbers and they would drop to a second one again. So this is what I mentioned earlier in a previous slide, and I wanted to remind you folks that over these five years. That the average growth of our. Tactical evaluation was three point seven four percent per year. And the average growth of our dollars was one point nine four. So you had historically always tried to bring in dollars less than our valuation growth was. Some years like this year, we just can't do it. We have all these years where we where we did that. Here was a big year where we tried way, way less. Then it actually grew from that year. So those things. Make it harder, make it harder each year as you move forward and I don't see that getting to the end here for you folks. This chart, I'm able to recount all of that just sitting. This this is not in concrete, folks, but this is everyone's proposed rate that they were all taking public care and here in a. And their property tax rate. And this chart is sorted by the column that says total city cap level. So you see we're down to this at eleven. Eleven eighty-five, where we're going to be eleven eighty-five, eleven eighty-six. But for ten eighty-five, sorry, I scared everybody. But if you can look at the column, there's total general flash special revenue. That's our operating nothing. Well, that's where our police, our fire, our benefit, general government parks, we were everywhere, parks. Library, all of those things are at, and you'll see that the city of Johnson is eight point five three. If you look at all the other total general special levels. The city of Johnson is second one. Only A, let me see something that I missed. Maybe else, no, only A. Is lower than the city of Johnson. In one column again, in this column here, that's called total general special letting. So that's where our A ten, our emergency letting, our employee letting, the things we need to cover for the modern operating city. Our debt service letting is just that, that will claim to hang our debt. And our debt included the public safety building that the voters voted on. It included a lot of streets when I first came to Johnson seventeen years ago. Every street council would be for, but we're getting all these streets. And we didn't listen. And we had projects for voters that we were doing. And it's done a huge nineteen million amount, it took twenty-one million dollars to improve the speed of our life. There was water, there was sewer, stormwater, two districts, we didn't sign. So even when you look at our debt service, the level at the dollar and thirty-three cents. And you look at all of those. Those four other cities that have higher operating levels than we do. Bourbondale five, Altona and West Memorial. They have a lower debt service. Otherwise. Bankers have a higher debt service than we do and so do the others. So. I know I talk to him, but collectively, you guys, I think we're doing half the job. I think you guys are making really great decisions, sound good fiscal decisions. And clearly what the public wants, the local public. The next slide, you and Americans have seen these a million times. Use a hundred thousand murders, a resident in a business so that a homeowner or a business can multiply pretty easily. Whatever we need to house, so you're back home with a stack of a hundred thousand. Rollback being in a fifty-four percent this year, fifty-four point six five. So that means you're at a tax of on fifty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Your tax bill compared to last year, it's going up fifteen dollars and thirty-nine. If your business. Again, they're all back to ninety. So their business only gets sold back to ninety thousand dollars. And with their new tax rate, their taxes are only going up sixteen dollars and twenty-five. Again, if you know, they're a large business, they can totally multiply and get and get that to the top. This chart I provide for you each year, this has to do with your residence, home, that person that pays. City taxes are a thousand dollars, home with five hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents per the year. This is how much it costs them. So for one year, that one's paying two hundred and seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents for all of their police, fire, storm sirens. All of that sort of all a year long. So less than a dollar every day for their public savings. And I've done that for public works, cultural recreation, all of our general government areas. This slide is again for your reference of all of our revenues we collect in the city of Johnson. By one percent of our total amount of revenues we get from property. Now that our other taxes, the city taxes, we can talk about local option sale tax and stuff like that, I can't remember right here, but. And then I did one for our seven years and I did all state program areas. So we have our general government one that you're all needs to public pay, public for control type of thing. Some of our capital project, debt service, capital project. And for those seventy percent, so that would mean I'm running from. Either the enterprise fund to debt service, so I'm doing something like that within their same project. And I have a twenty-two percent water sewer stormwater. And then finally, on our last slide. Our budget has revenue of eighty-six million, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Bénéfice of ninety-four million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand. And ending by now, this one out of six hundred and sixty. I hope for each of you, but I gave this to you so that we would speak to one of those. Funds, so the city has to report by funding, county has to report high funds. General fund, special letting fund, gift special. Debt service, capital. I'm sorry, the enterprise, they become so. And you can see that we're estimating kind of getting down. The city of Johnson is going to be forty-nine million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-eight million, nine, about five hundred thousand. So, question. Any question?
Here's I have one question, and you may have said this, but I just pointed the presentation, maybe I just didn't get it. What percentage of our lost dollars go to property tax for this budget?
Total?
What percentage goes to property tax?
If I have that on the slide there, I'll get my my computer and we'll come to you.
I think that's important information for us, for us to have.
On page nine of the.
The dollar.
The dollar. Other questions for Teresa?
So we've kind of moved that we may. I'm looking at. So page seventeen of this document. So we. So we. It shows our general fund levy at eight dollars and ten cents. Where is he loving twenty-seventh? And as I, I think as I'm saying. We are, our general fund levy had been lower than six, seven dollars and seventies. And we decided to kind of go to forty ten and we reduced our. Forty that levy is that way.
Correct.
What was, was that, I think it was governed a little bit by this anticipated. That's a legislation that at this point. Doesn't appear likely to pass this session. So I guess if you, if you had to do it all over again, you still kind of take the perfect one of the ten? Or what's the thought process, especially if you think about that next year, because obviously they tend to cap. I don't think, but you're going to be not having that way. That's correct. It's just, I think it's, it's again, it's legislative driven, gives us flexibility to do. Where if you get capped on dollar amount of grant, where we're getting the full, we're getting more at that full. So it's just trying to give us flexibility.
And interesting, if you look here in that same chart that five and Brian did not.
They're the only two states that did not do it.
And but then if you look at their employee benefit. Letting, there's considerable power.
And they they also, these are all better last year.
No, I hope I've heard everyone's this year.
This is, this, so this is a reflection. And it's proposed. But this is.
Five, I'll leave everybody. Other questions for Teresa? This is a public hearing on this item, is there anyone in the audience? So now just one second for me. And on this reconciliation, I think I'm talking as well, which I'm sorry, you can't see that very well, but. Right this year, next year, it's ninety-one point nine five percent. Of our lost dollars, hook up the tax rate, ninety-one point nine five percent. Okay, if there is someone in the audience who would like to go to the council on this item, we will then. Close the public hearing at seven forty. Let's take a motion and you know how plans, you know, like you. We have a motion to approve resolution, we're planning to get a eight. We have a motion in the second, in the second.
Teresa, can you pull up that spreadsheet there?
That awesome. Yep.
Just go to page nine. But I think that that sheets is kind of pretty informative. Especially if you look at the kind of, you know, what we've been able to sort of do is because we've got additional amounts of local option sales tax maybe each year. We've been able to, in a sense, have a larger budget. By the minute here, the budget pile would be eleven dollars. Twenty-one, twelve dollars and thirty-six cents in twenty-two, one three, twelve million, thirteen, fifteen, thirteen. And I think that's all good and appropriate. I think we're, we're spending those same things that are very, as you outlined very well. And things that are needed and demanded by our citizens et cetera. But I think obviously we ought to be cautious that that number is getting bigger. I think we just have to accomplish. And that's probably not system. And we need to be, we need to be honest with ourselves. That we're going to, if we don't continue to get larger and larger amounts of local option sales tax revenue. We are not going to have to make some tougher decisions now. But I think our business is to kind of acknowledge that.
Well, before we do the more, I just want to thank Teresa and all the staff for the incredible work that you did this year on helping us prepare the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. This, this was a challenging year. We faced hurdles like we've never faced before. Let's just say coming in and changing the rules, you know, halfway through the process. Deflation rates we've never seen before, you know, insurance increases. I mean, we, those were just suddenly greater issues we had based this year through putting the budget together. I think that we always are true to that fact, you know, our growing community. And we have a, we have a population that has high, high expectations. We try and meet those highs. Got to make sure that they have the place firefighters who need to feel safe. They have the recreational amenities to, you know, take their families out and in the. Find leisure and recreation in our, in our communities. And, and one that they. Expect, but don't talk about a lot, and that is all the infrastructure. But sewers, waters, the, 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 the streets and then the staff. For all of that. So, you know, I think that, you know, we've done a great job taking the. The budgetary challenges that we've had this year, putting together a budget that meets those demands. Writing additional staff, support firefighters, police, other staff, equipment, and training they need to support them in doing their job for our community. I think, I think you can all be very proud of the budget this has been prepared here this year and, you know. I'm going to be happy to share with our residents, our community, what we've been able to accomplish here and. Tell them that it was a, it was a great team effort on all our part to, you know, what we have here about us tonight. So again, I just want to thank everyone for all their good work and supporting us through this process. It was, it was quite a year.
We have comments? Now we have a motion in a second, Sambo please.
Coke.
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution with point three dash eighty-one? Don't move.
I did.
No, motion in a second discussion. Sambo please.
Ready?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution with point three dash eighty-two?
So move.
Second, we have a motion in the second discussion. Sambo please.
Martin?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Teresa, you can't talk us out of anything. But may I review the motion for? One of the actions I'd like you to do at the council is have a motion to grant the police department. The authority, I have this written in, oh, okay, yes. Do we have a motion? To grant police department orders to increase its authorized staffing on sworn personnel in thirty-four. Effective with the point three point four question.
So move.
So you have a motion in a second discussion. Sambo please.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Sorry, Teresa, I thought that was part of the resolution. Moving on to incentive agenda, do we have a motion to approve the incentive agenda? Don't move. We have a motion in a second discussion?
I just have a question regarding. It's item. Construction plan, we're not quite with. Is there a trail that's as part of this project? I mean, I don't know if I have any, I identify as probably looking like. We had a discussion about it was near a trail, it would be kind of moving along here or south of this property. What is the status here?
Property development agreement on that property. The developer required to gain easement for trail, because it would have to be a city constructed infrastructure. So that would have to be a C I two project.
Okay, so the D is minutes. They're making the D about who we have.
When five o'clock is. And then we construct the trail when our government decide.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Sam, we did have a motion, right?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second, Sambo please.
Ready?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-incentive agenda. Item seven, eight, this is a resolution of twenty-three, eight, five. Approving and authorizing execution of amendment number three to the agreement with private development. By and between city of Johnson and Ignite Johnson Allos.
Goodness, council, it's been a while since the event, I've been running, so I started off just kind of quick status update of where the project stands today. Outlying red is the actual property that's just going to be owned by, again, project. There are some land transfers yet to take place. Part of the former all as property to be heated over to the city, the city fields. And part of the former property that the city acquired from Bourbondale to be heated over to ignite more towards the university. I'm very happy for them, we have the city retention pond, which handles the stormwater, the most. North parking lot and the pet complex. Retention pond has been constructed, I believe, today. The north parking area would be structured by the city on city property. Probably at least your child serve is graded. In design, ready for bid, we're in the board. The overall Ignite property is the mass graded. Fit out the underground utility works to start playing this market. And we have a button for depression pond, dirt, sitting, putting the set of fields. And city park property. And that's where you get graded after this resolution to creating conversations that have been happening on the southern portion of the Ignite slate. City park slate, precious property. Is just a rate of this real line.
Kind of a mezzanine level. Center part building with some stadium seating that looks out of the field house and it would be amazing. Uh on the east. I do have a call that there's been uh about that looks at where the policy is and that it feels just any of all of ours. So.
Any other questions? Not going to be our motion to approve resolution twenty three dash eight five. I move. Second, we have a motion, second discussion. Sam Ball, please.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Evans.
Motion passed. Item seventy, consider approval of second reading of orders number ten ninety six. Many Indian people saw in that thirty three point five seven seven acres from A R to C D and R one sixty. Sub property is located southeast of the intersection of northwest corner drive and northwest one hundred and five first street. Using case point three dash zero two.
Good evening, there's been no updates and uh no changes since first reading. I did add that this is an item uh two two or three months after the question first meeting. First one to get a hold up showing that specifics of when the speed limit measures are. And then this didn't get added earlier today, a title related concept along with onto the aerial perspective of how this area could be developed. Uh I do want to remind that we are not approving any specific development plan. That will need to come back to this separate approval process through the fund rate plan. So this should hopefully help give you an indication of what this area could look like upon development. We do have representatives that applicants who question them. From them, but when we have to take questions, we'll do detail here.
Concerned questions? Thank you for the matter. Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Second reading orders number ten ninety six.
The word.
Second, we have a motion, second discussion. Sam Ball, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Item seventy, consider second reading of orders number ten ninety four, moving an official selling map number for approximately five point eight seven acres located south of northwest seventh avenue and west of Peckham Street. From R one seventy five, same family residential district, R two, one or two family residential district.
Uh there's been no changes since the first reading and I received no further public comments of that.
Any questions for Erin? Not, do we have a motion to approve second reading orders number ten ninety four?
The word.
Second. We have a motion, second discussion.
If you have one thing that we're discussing during that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about later we were going to work on lowering the speed limit to Peckham. And so I look forward to discussing that. We have a ad hoc public force meeting this Friday. And I'm hoping that we could have a conversation at that time on um on how we're going to move forward with uh implementation of a study of implementation of items to lower the speed.
Yeah, we've actually added to our city line traffic study, that area. So it'll be coming with those results, just that update. Uh council, we did get the rail crossing signed, it has been uh it's already up out there, so.
Great. Good to hear, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Sam Ball, please.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seventy, consider resolution twenty three dash eight six, moving site plans for a nine thousand two hundred five smartphone convenience store. There's retail, field sales and detached car wash at fifty six oh eight Merle Road. Quick start section. Erin.
Just wanted to say. Uh the site plan submitted by Quick Star for fifty six oh eight Merle Road, you picked up a mention of the former Johnson County School District Avenue. For a lot of construction of a Quick Star convenience store with twenty people stations and detached car wash. Uh the property is shown here on the overhead shaded in purple at the northwest intersection of Merle Road and Pioneer Parkway. Trying to make good site plan illustrations to be able to communicate. Uh so I can show a full access point at Merle Road and Pioneer Parkway. Uh full access on Pioneer Parkway will require a reconstruction of the grass median, the separate east and westbound traffic lanes. Uh that did include a condition of approval stating the city is not responsible for any financial cost or uh design or reconstruction of that median. And a construction drawings must be permitted to review and put in by the city council prior to construction. Uh site plan show up like a public sidewalk to be installed on the north side of Pioneer Parkway. And there is already existing sidewalk adjacent to Merle Road that will be removed and reconstructed with additional distance from the paving surface. Uh to allow for snowstorm to ride away. And that added distance leading the sidewalk fully out, first our property. And public use that is required of use of that wall. And with regard to parking, our code requires seventy three parking stalls on the site. And the site plan shows sixty six parking stalls, a difference of seven stalls. Uh I do want to point out that this plan is submitted and reviewed under our old zoning ordinance. And the new code that will become effective in May first would require a far fewer parking spaces. Uh but the council does have the authority to waive the installation of those seven stalls. And recommendation for that waiver of what being presented to you tonight, um coming from the planning commission citing recognition of that impending decrease parking requirement affected May one. Against the operating under the old code, the architectural requirement mandates seventy five percent permanent materials on all sides of the building. And the elevation drawings. Show the convenience store near the entirety brick, but there's a small amount of evas that if you engage with ends of the convenience store. Um evas is allowed, but it's limited to twenty five percent of the elevation and these are compliance, as you can see here, there's a long use of evas on these cable ends on three building elevations. Depending where it's armed over there. And the car wash, wash, excuse me, matches the brick of primary building and there's no use of evas on the car wash. Uh both buildings meet our federal requirements to go with it. While the code requirement, our council may practice requesting support columns for uh pump and piece uh to be tied to brick. And we did make that request at Quick Star. And during that, uh we made that request during the development review process and they were they were happy to kind of make that change, so the the elevation that were submitted uh for the canopy show those support columns flat and brick. With regard to landscaping, nineteen trees and twenty eight shrubs are required and the site plans indicate twenty eight trees and a hundred and three shrubs. Uh street trees are also required at fifty foot intervals on both the Merle Road and Pioneer Parkway frontages. Site plan are compliant with eight street trees on the Merle Road frontage and four on Pioneer Parkway frontage. Site plan with three trees on the Pioneer Parkway uh frontage are to be preserved. In addition, uh to those new trees will be planted along Pioneer Parkway. Uh there are also two trees in the northwest corner of the site that would be preserved as well. In my staff report, I can mention that this building was originally constructed in the nineteen fifties as part of Pioneer campus. And that history is reflected in a pedestal above the front door that we tried to ladder for. Uh staff did recommend the outfit reach out to local executives at Cortez to determine if they had interest in preserving that pedestal. Uh Quick Star has reported to me that they've made those contacts. Um I didn't require any condition but approval in your staff report regarding that issue. Um in addition, there's a property follow down the property that is placed as an entrance feature to the green metal subdivision. And this follow is similar design to the original concrete street signs that were placed around the green metal subdivision. Uh staff is informed the outfit, there may be interest, while you have the council preserving that follow. For that end, the site plans do include a note which stipulates removal and salvage of the follow to be coordinated with the city. Uh I did include a picture of the follow in your staff reports. If you want me to pilot on my way there, my hands, it's gonna take me a second. Just so when I say follow, you know exactly what I'm talking about with uh construction here and all the overhead. Um let's stop short of recommending a condition of approval and staff for regarding the follow. Uh council would like to make any further action or taking further action on this follow. Uh the above and beyond renewal and salvage to be coordinated with the city as I have stated in the uh or as is stated on the site lines. Uh it would be appropriate to make or have that scheduled, maybe make an amendment to the resolution to reflect that change. They did recommend a number of conditions of approval, most of which are pretty standard. And I said, I know this will join the proper members, I've received my comments. Try to keep it uh very fair tonight, because I think until eleven thirty if you're last week. Uh but if you have any questions on anything in the staff report, you want to well, in further, happy to do that now. Um do have representatives from Quick Star here that looks to me, these people on service in the audience, um if you should have questions for them. Uh any questions for me at this time?
Erin, I want to talk just a little bit about that, Alice. What is it?
Baller.
Baller. Their concrete pillar. We we talked about this in the quick works meeting. And you know, the question was asked then, do we have any, you know, any interest or concern about removing it or moving to someplace else? And and I shared at that meeting that I thought it would be concerned by the uh our residents, we live in green metals, green metals. If it was just completely removed and 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 destroyed. That I I think that they there might be some identification by those those residents with this this baller. Uh so I think it was a discussion about maybe just moving it to another location on the Quick Star side, but even even um after I left that meeting that day, I thought, you know, I'm more probably a more appropriate place for this baller would be along the green freeway in green metals. There's a there's a burn there close to Pioneer Parkway that might, you know, an appropriate location for it, or there might be some other uh more appropriate location, but I'm thinking that, you know, that that quadrant, even though it's probably or at least at one time was within green metals. I don't think that it's viewed as being part of the green mountain neighborhood any longer. But if you move it down to the 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 green belt. Um you know, I I think that that would be, that is in 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 the center of uh of green metals and and it might be uh just a a better location, one that the the residents there would would uh feel better about, so um. I don't know if, I don't, I don't know that the residents in Green House have a strong feeling about the baller. Um and I'm I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a private meeting and invite them in and have some conversation with them. I don't know what are, what what kind of timeframe we're we're operating on here, maybe Erin, you can tell us.
Um you know, I haven't been for a Quick Star, I think that um they don't have have plans to start immediately this summer, I think they're looking at shuttle, starting the next next summer, next spring, basically.
We have some time to have conversation.
There might be some time, um but it is important maybe tonight to talk about what is that is preserving the place that remaining on the table is part of the discussion because that might impact how they further refine their site plan and make amendments. Um because it's the current placement of the baller will impact on the placement of advertising signage, uh that their money assigned. And if there's a uh you know, if that's wanting to stay on the table, they should probably know that tonight, so they can plan a further.
I personally am am fine with moving it to a more appropriate location.
It is, it's a, it's not within an easement, it's not within right of way, it's all on um on on private property, uh actually owned publicly, I guess, because it's under ownership of the community school district, but um it's not been an easement area, um it's not within right of way. Uh technically, it's it's uh I guess, as of tonight, it's the school district's property to do with as they choose, um. But so we keep some of these seconds in mind, doesn't have the discussion.
I mean, I think there's probably people in this community that don't like those ballots. Um and we decided a long time ago that they aren't good for indicating street signage. But what what federal government told us is a better better way to splice uh street sign, but I think that it's still kind of an identification of that neighborhood as well as green metals plus, whether you like them or not. Um so I, I I I I guess I would invite other council members' comments.
I I'm kind of diagnostic on the ball, I don't think you should.
Well, and I and that's going to be my next question, so putting that in, but.
But I I I think I'm I'm comfortable with moving forward tonight, with kind of an idea with this map, we have this location. And in some sort of process that if somebody wants to establish, figure out her cause of need to pay for it. Um you know, I I don't think that's a push on our cause. But um you know, it's all, I perfectly find that.
And this, and again, as uh the site plan you're approving tonight does contain a note that says uh reboot and and coordinate relocation with the city or something to that effect, so I don't know if we have to take any further action beyond that. Uh other than, we've had this discussion here now that we're going to come back and there isn't where we'll go at a later date. And kind of coordinate some of that uh relocation process, but I don't know if we have to take any further action. Um certainly if you want to circle back and talk about the type, you know, the type of lack where we're signing, again, kind of similar situation where um on private property, you know, if we're doing anything in the code that can require us to um put a condition says it must be preserved, certainly Quick Star, and I mean, they they recognize that this is behind a sign, they reached out to Cortez. Uh I I just had a page trying to go to the U P T at this time to summarize what um what conversation you have with that on the issue.
Good evening, my name is Casey Bondur, I'm a real estate manager for Quick Star. And I have reached out to Cortez, um and we are there and have started a conversation early on, um and we're there, we're open to, you know, a lot of things that might be removed, likely, since we will own the property, hopefully at that point, uh that he would work with our contractor to try and solve it as best as possible. Um and work with and provide that thing us for, you know, um an opportunity to say yes and no, that if you want it and if it is or no, then you know, we're willing to contact you too. If. They're for me.
And I think we'll probably think along the same lines, if for whatever reason Cortez doesn't mind. We would probably mind.
Yeah, I think you said there's some liability issues that 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 uh you don't want to invite Cortez to come off of the property to remove the sign, because that's going to end your ownership and you'll be assuming liability. Uh so you would rather coordinate those renewable efforts on behalf of Quick Star and then, yeah, and then, so.
Whether there's a criminal issue. I just, whoever's the, whoever you're hiring, right of knowledge, that really with that would be part of their for the salvage, you know, you can make sure that, you know, such.
And we would reach out to even that contractor here to to get it as well as well and or this into one thing, again, just somehow working with either party.
So if you think maybe we lack some teeth in requiring those things, but it's something Quick Star has been making good paid efforts to to move those conversations forward and I don't know if you can make for, I guess, to the resolution tonight, but if you see that, certainly, uh we can amend the resolution.
I I don't see any need for any addition to the resolution, I think. You can and uh trust them to work with us on the second.
I don't know.
I I do have a question, very question, it's not related to anything else here, but to the Quick Star, I'm sorry, I'm staying with Casey. You've been bothering that, are you asked to add some better to the after uh charging station with this, this sort of, you know, so you nothing to do with your plan and your thing, but asking.
We do not have plans right now to, um we will likely add conduit to allow for it to be installed in the future. Worse than the company we're still working on, you know, what are planned as for electric parking stations at this point, so we do not have to be shown on this plan.
Okay, I'm just adding, you know, the new rules are coming by and a lot of things that are moving towards, at a few points, by twenty thirty. I guess, more security, it's already working on the way to on the road, we'll be at. So that question, sorry, you can apply when you just.
Thank you.
If if possible, before you just get this started, do you have any sense uh from existing uh floors and construction, what kind of noise levels a car wash generates? And has there been any kind of feedback from uh for instance, the the daycare uh to the west of there or the child serve area with concerns about how?
I I have not heard of any concerns at this point. Um I would say any we have that he's done on watching the um it is noise here for Merle, it will be noise here for Merle Road, because that is the extent where the drivers are located. Um but it's likely that somebody at that daycare will hear the traffic from Merle or the the.
So the cars will enter the car wash west to east. There's a, there's a lot of arrows on this map. On there, on. Yeah, the arrows on.
You might be looking at circulation map, um I'm not sure, it might be demonstrated how semi.
Uh this is the semi, I have to look.
I think it's the fluid on telling that.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, I have to know what page you're on to um.
Um page thirteen of the.
Uh you're in the cycle.
But I mean, it's as long as the the plan is to have it go west to east, which will then be dry as well. And the positioning of the car washes. And uh more east, roughly northeast quadrant of the property. Part of the department. Some of the users.
So initially, when, yeah, there's a circulation plan in the uh site plan that shows, it just showed Tom Lager vehicles maybe through the site, that those arrows pointing the opposite direction, but if you look closer at this, uh got holes in there here. These black arrows here. It shows um the arrow pointing to east for the car wash and you can enter this location, exit out for the brother. Um and there is no buffer requirement um from code between this property and any of the adjacent properties. However, other landscape plan does indicate they're going to provide a uh a vinyl fence, solid vinyl fence on that west property line between the Quick Star property and the west adjacent childhood property. Um in addition, there is landscaping at that location as well, that can help to to buffer that noise.
A solid vinyl fence, how tall would it be?
Yeah, I don't recall, um.
So th- this is like uh uh kind of a higher end residential thing, uh solid white?
Solid white uh vinyl fence, uh they're shown on the site plan, and now, I'm sorry, I can't remember which sheet it showed on. Um they are what we hear on the last sheet, she.
Might have to be off, so since the property line runs right through the parking lot, you're gonna have snow removal issues, et cetera, so I bet your fence is not gonna be able to be on the parking lot, it's gonna have to be into your site and bed for car overhand and you know, that's it on the west side.
Yeah, for the west, yeah.
Oh, it's not, it's not there, no, it's north side.
Yeah, as we, as we look at this, so if you can see my error on the screen, this would be in the north direction, obviously you can see Pioneer Parkway over there on the south. Um there there's a daycare that I believe is under ownership, child served here on the west. Um and that's that's where that vinyl fence would go. Um in addition, they've got some some landscaping there as well for buffer noise.
Um may I add just one more question for Erin, uh can you explain a little bit more about the uh what's happening on Pioneer Parkway with the burn? We have two lanes going at this location, east and west. Two lanes, two lanes west. Is is it changing to one lane going west and one lane for for your turn?
No, it will remain two lanes in both directions, um the set, that median, the grass median will be removed and reconstructed to allow a turn lane. Um a turn lane will be allowed um if you're going um eastbound on Pioneer Parkway, there'll be a turn lane allowing you to turn into uh full access on Pioneer Parkway in this uh convenience store site. Um likewise, if you're headed west on Pioneer Parkway, there'll be access to the full length yard or club site. Um but the others, there's no talk of, I believe, choking this down, you know, while I'm in. I would be maintaining your students, brass media that.
I think I was looking at the hour line indicates, uh I guess, the link. Uh the two different lanes that are being curved. So it's painted, so there's a painted median too, and is that for is that because we need that room for the trucks to swing in and out?
It's it's a traffic safety thing, I don't have a uh like traffic near here tonight, uh modeling to tell us why that's necessarily constructed that way, I don't have a good answer.
When when we get those plans, my comment is gonna be, if we get us getting a little median uh between the two, what what is that gonna be? Like, gonna be concrete, assuming that it's three or four foot wide. Is there any way that we can get more green space in there? That, those are my comments, I'll wait for you uh different.
I mean, again, yeah, that will be something, um that's, you're actually not approving that act, so that you're not approving the median changes here tonight. Um that will come at a later date, it will be presented with a set construction drawings, and we can have that conversation at that time. Um there will be another opportunity for you to review that.
I appreciate it. Any other questions for Erin? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash eight six? Second, we have a motion, a second, whether discussion. Sam Ball, please.
Ready.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Final item under the not consent agenda is to consider approval of payment in the amount of six hundred and ten thousand, monitor nineteen thousand, ninety five cents. We have a motion to approve, move approval. Now, motion and second discussion. Sam Ball, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Burkhardt.
Yeah.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Did you administer a thoughts?
A few updates, first, maybe remiss, uh without pointing out in my memo on the budget today, but I just want to also thank staff, to Teresa uh for her work and and countless hours that she spent on the budget, but all the department directors, Chief Daniel, Chief Carr, uh Cindy, Matt, David, Don, Merritt, who are not here, and all the other staff, with time that brings it, it's a group effort. I really sincerely appreciate their work that they put on, so thank you. Um one note, uh did receive a comment from Metro Waste today, the spring cleanup work is underway. They did not complete all of the cleanup pickup uh for the first day. Uh so just continue, they will continue to clean that area up and then it will move into the west of uh eighty six street, starting tomorrow, or starting late tomorrow, but that is is underway.
Is is something that will go out on Facebook or website or something saying that some of will go continue until Wednesday, don't real panic if your stuff is picked up.
Yeah, I can check it, we'll get something out. I'm going to take a moment and turn over to Chief Daniel, who's gonna talk a little update on right.
Good evening, um we are officially one hundred days away from when I thought I wanted to be born, so um this is obviously going to be huge generated for, you know, it's all put out, the metropolitan area announcement, you know, et cetera. And also, you know, exception to that. So, um, just giving you a great broad, I think, this point, it's in the, we're absolutely working on it. Um, you're gonna see a lot of layers that come to this. Uh, while they are not in that city, you expect it to be a tremendous amount of traffic on trail of our community. Um, partnering with all the communities around us, looking at a more global perspective, community management. It is leading the words operations center initiative, or a large scale command. Myself, at least, you could be working at E O C two days as part of that area command. We'll likely have our own D O C system up here in Johnston as well. And we'll see upstate and there's a lot of vibration from the blue fire and that's all. So it's immense in the dating. Uh, last time the Red Pride was in the one area was seven, nine decade ago. And we're expecting some of getting four and five times more people than last time this happened. And so it's, it's going to be a big effort. Um, the, the public service administration, uh, all of these services working together, uh, the regular meetings happen all the time. And there's some, also, what global meetings happens. Uh, so, um, I, you have specific questions as things move forward. I have to try and do the best I can. Um, this is, it's very, for me, I have been doing that for a while. Um, this is pretty much the smell, it's coming together, uh, optimization, the labs, and all those things, so. I mean, I'm not there, well, with that, there should be experience, and we'll see a lot of, uh, participation, a lot of baby members and models and photographs. Is there any question?
Yeah, Chief, one of the E O C?
Sorry. Rivers Operations, so.
I, I thought it would be something like that, right? I needed to know. And you're gonna have one somewhere here in Johnston, you're.
So the public safety building, um, people are working in woods, have, uh, fire rate locally, in the other resources. People like this in the Public Safety Operations Center, Public Safety Hall. And you want scary, you can say operations center, including, I can't.
I, I'm glad that you are, um, keeping us informed. I already know dozens of people that are going to be on this Red Pride and then just. Once they hit north of Johnston, they're gonna go. Filter their way home. And that's what's gonna happen all across the metro.
Yes, we're, we're gonna have filter, filter of you can come from the north, south, come home, and have others coming from the south, north, and try to catch everything. So we expect will be a lot of first time riders, all the family riders. Uh, so our trails will be very busy. Um, and, and we staffing to support, um, not only. We know the north, the city of Hager will be responsible for those areas, so. It's, it's moving danger, and there's some, but I'm confident in you.
I, I am confident in you too. And here's the other thing, there will be no child service. As the majority of those, for those, not saying it's going down, it seems to be overloaded. When you're on the Red Pride left. And you will, if you're looking to contact people while you're in that net, you won't be able to.
Will, there'll be additional power.
Oh, well, there.
Good. It's still, still not a guarantee, but.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Obviously, the public safety communications, the priority is still that as well, so it's. Yes, have, have an alternative, alternative plans for ending up with you, or having work wants to match up with this.
You know, it would be interesting if we did something here at City Hall, at least like with the electronic signs. Welcome Red Pride, and if there was any. Anything else?
Any usable or is it?
Well, you know, frankly, you know, bikers, they might need air or a place to stop and fix. It's a, it's something, I don't know. Um, or even just forget if they enter there. Public ones that stop at, stop by the City Hall and admire murals. I don't know, but I think. You're gonna be on bike, I'm gonna be on bike. Uh, we might wanna take advantage of these people filtering through. Um, to show our best faith.
Yeah, I'm, I'm learning about, there's a lot of students in the post that. They go along the route, you, you put a hydroline alternative path, using the rail system. So I, I do believe that we're gonna see quite a lot of activity like this.
Thank you for that. Um. One last report, I'm gonna turn over the claims, and I'll talk about our soil project this time.
As this group is very top deployed, we can see the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from High Government Agriculture, Lady Stewardship. Uh, starting in, beginning of April, we've begun rolling that grant out, giving preliminary cost estimates to, uh, property owners throughout our community. Great interest in this program so far. Um, total of about, I think it's fifty-nine property owners as of today. We've got a ton of a little over fifteen acres treated and we did everything. That's going to be done for about fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, so a lot of resources available for residents. If you're interested, uh, let me know. If you know people that are interested, it's great. We're, uh, we're really excited about it. And, um, we're hoping to, uh, get many people on our contractors before the end of May. But then we get a hit June and start finalizing, closing, get that contractor on board for our fall installation of this contract.
And can you describe what it is that they do?
Yes, the soil quality restoration, it's the process of deep aeration of your yard, uh, that typically about a six inch block that will do. That will, uh, decompose the soil. And then they, after the aeration, they do a, a spread of compost and grassy mixture. About, uh, half the inch of compost there. That increases the organic matter into your soil. The studies have shown that one treatment of soil quality restoration is approximately the equivalent of fifteen years of your lawn breaking down. It's just a nutrient boost to your soil. And that will allow for free water infiltration storage in your yard, which should improve the water quality of our water shed. It will result in stronger root health of your grass, which in turn will require less irrigation. Less fertilizer, keep up, particularly radiculium, it boosts the disorder, in what is now a lesser region of the yard. Uh, as a result of it, but really the primary benefit here is to improve water quality, where we see no water.
So if they are in six inches deep, is there concern about hitting the irrigation systems?
That has not been an issue when both city applied. Um, I think they only gave you have one or two. Instances of their agents is in the pit, and that was a result of improperly watched straight foot heads. Um, but they've done over a hundred, quickly, and those do some, just a base, uh, at similar project. I'm not a writer about where we can afford them, and be efficient.
Well, I told my husband that we needed to apply for this. As we, we need to do something with the yard, like all of our yards, it's clay right under the, right under the grass. But our neighbor next door, over the weekend, dared somebody to literally go in, and rotate his entire garden. He's silent. So now he's, he's concerned that that's what they're going to be doing. No, I.
That's an extreme example of. Decapacit. There's, there's one way to deal with it, that's not the way we're.
Oh, good.
We did a test, uh, or like a sample plot down in Raceless Park, um, with our parks department. And honestly, you might go down there now, not even realize you did anything, but, uh, they used like the compost with the aeration. So you might have to look real close to, to realize you did anything. But over this number, you'll probably notice if you go down to Raceless Park, one area that.
This world looks bad.
So that's all I have to do.
Where are we getting an application?
Uh, right now, we just want to reach out to myself and we'll give you a preliminary cost estimate. We're not, uh, you put down applications until June. When we're doing the final process, it's just about giving you your preliminary cost estimate, get you on our contact list, so we can. Grab you off of that final cost estimate to do. Thank you.
Any else, Mike?
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to comments, so. Captain Martin. Uh, congratulations to the City of Johnston for getting a, the U S A and actually getting also a growth award. So, uh, okay, appreciate that. I was there at the, uh, award, and it's always nice to have. Uh, my own city there. Appreciate that. Um. I don't think I have anything else. I know, oh, I was told to remind everybody that I sent flowers, they should get out such flowers.
Merritt, I first wanted to say thank you for following up and inviting, uh, the large show choir. It's, uh, absolute treat. And it was wonderful to have in there. Um, but in that theme of music, I, I would be hesitant to not ask. David Loebert, he's singing, who went with me, or Somewhere Over the Rainbow Trout, uh, in that standpoint. Uh, it was so much fun this weekend to see not only his family, but so many anglers that were out there in the sixteen hundred trout delivery. The city did an awesome job promoting that, partnering with V N R, uh, obviously Parks folks, thank you so very much, uh, for doing that. And even though the weather was a little moving, uh, it didn't seem to, uh, keep anybody away from wanting to try to catch a trout. And that is, uh, a lot of fun. Um, and, uh, I, I, last I want to do on my musical, uh, numbers here. It is, uh, the Johnston High School musical this weekend, Frozen. So there are just some tickets left, uh, so we'll go. Um, otherwise, I will have to sing three songs from Proverbs. But I can say. From the show choir that. Our, our children, and she's outstanding. So, yes. Um, I just want, wanted to, I thought this was a personal note, but as of an hour ago, there was one additional Eagle Scout resident at the City of Johnston. Some neighbors called and reached out.
Congratulations.
Very proud of him. He and I will now be able to probably go a couple weeks without his mother name. Anyway, very, very proud of him.
All right, you should. Captain Ryan.
Uh, I'd like to talk about what, yeah, the constant, when Ryan, Ryan, when I said I love the fish at the Red Pride. That was my first time overseeing a video of it, now it's on active open heaven, I'm very good, and. They reached, I think we've quite a fish, the red, for the first time. That was very good. That was very good. You had a lot of good luck with that. Definitely going to have. Thank you very much. And also like, thank God for the budget process and better, that was a good presentation that we made this evening that gives everybody a good picture of all we did, what we did, you know. I think, hope. Everybody could make that happen. Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Long time, I found it stretch, because I know I was extremely difficult this year regarding the budget. I, I mean, just five years ago, I think I finally started understanding. So thank you. Um, Ryan, I forgot to mention who was culture or anything. It was just, like, I'm, there's a, who you call me. Book today, April twenty-ninth, Tuesday, that's my school. And. And I had a, I, I had a email, a phone call, and then my own personal concerns about parking. Out here, at the, uh. Pixel. When that place is, is busy, we, we, and then we open more stuff out here. We, um.
People are concerned about parking in your area.
You know, the place is hard.
Uh, when you say about the park.
Yeah.
The good news is the first thing that moves out will be constructed is that parking up. Uh, in acknowledgement of there being localized someplace, uh, and. So that will hopefully help everybody most apart, bring extra business, you know, get past house, get over there. Thanks.
Well, in the spirit of thanking staff for, uh, all the great events that we have had on our community, just since I was like, come to me. We had the, uh, pride building and the library this weekend, and that is always an incredible, incredible experience. You know, it runs through the floor, and then people are just constantly coming into the library to, uh, build kites. I said it before, it's, it, it really brings out diversity of, uh, that we, that we have in our community. Every culture has type building or type making, type find in their, in their history, in their culture, and you can see it by the, uh. Uh, by the diversity in residents that turn up for it. So thanks to the library staff. Um, for their support in that, communication staff and their support in that. So, so it's something that is. Our, our community looks forward to every year. Um, also the bomber groundbreaking. That was a spectacular event. We had a nice day for that, or you came up with that, the coverage on what's going on there, and a lot of excitement in our community. Around the construction of the bombers facility. Also, um. The dedication of the bridge over the interstate. By, on, in honor of one of our, um, military members, who lived just, just outside of the Johnson City limits. We weren't Johnson when we grew up there. The, uh, the White House just on the other side of the bridge, uh, into the one there, but, uh, military member. Who. Lost his life in, in Vietnam, back in nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, you know, I'm talking to some of his former classmates and allies on the day of the event. Sound like we're just, you know, an amazing young man, and just, uh, you know, unfortunately, which, who, the, uh. Uh, died from a mortar fire, uh, also in Vietnam. So that was, that was a nice, uh, event to be very relevant as well. So lots of great things going on, you know, time, and even more and more coming up in the next couple of months. So. Get on your calendar and, uh, yeah, participate with us. And again, thanks to all our, our staff for, for making, making all those great opportunities available to promote. With that, if you have something for the, uh, conference meeting. If not, we are adjourned. So you were blaming me for not being.
Saying you're.